Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
... conflict of interest with?
No.
The next is, we don't have any minutes at the moment. We do have a warrant though. Uh, warrant number 17 for $86,019.77.
Some move.
Move by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Items over 1,000. Oh, we're buying salt, epilachi salt. Two of them, $2,876 and $2,934. Bennington County Sheriff's, $1,664. Uh, several for Bow Fuel, $2,333. Uh, $1,246. Caterpillar Finance Services, $12,529. Is that a yearly thing?
It's a yearly thing with a penalty from CAC because the bill we mailed in 30 days before it was due, the bill, the check never arrived. And Caterpillar doesn't care. They want their late fee and...
Let's take that.
Okay.
Yeah, just to let you know, that's like $600 more than it should be.
Okay.
It'll turn up someday.
Sure.
And it costs us $35 cancel the check, so.
Uh, William E. Daley, two of them, $4,795. Innovative Surface Solutions, it must be for some chloride, $4,915. KAS, this is Ground Monitoring Services, $8,651. Uh, VLTC Property Insurance with them, $18,476. Wallingford Crush Stone, $1279, $2,700. Oh, I'm sorry, Weaver Landscaping, $2,700. And that's it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
So you know, the Weaver Landscaping isn't doing landscaping, it's mental equipment. Uh, we use that to rebuild the Telenor Trail.
Which looks amazing.
Yeah, thank you. They did a great job.
I have really, it's stunning.
Yeah, so that was the rent, three pieces of like mini excavators and things to get down the pathway.
I've had several people comment about how lovely it is and how much more walkable it is now.
Yeah, yeah, it came out really nice. I'm sorry, who made the motion on that? Tony? Thank you.
Joe seconded it.
Announcements? We are looking for members to form the Economic Development Committee and also the Cohaw Committee. The Cohaw Committee will be, will not go beyond its report to us, which could be in a year or two, but Economic Development Committee...
Will be a standing committee.
Will be a standing thing for a long time, I have a feeling, okay? But looking for members, have you gotten any?
We have two that have come forward and certainly anybody else we'd like to have. And also I just wanted to say thank you to the community for everybody who came out for our Poole or Express event. It was a great turnout and we're hoping that will be an annual event going forward.
Santa Claus made it.
Santa Claus did, all the way from the North Pole.
Any other announcements? Public comments? Your folks are on the agenda, so. Nobody on Zoom?
No, there's no one on Zoom.
Melanie, you're up for the researchers' report.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Did you get my report?
Yep.
Okay. Take a look at the cash flow first, please. This is for November, since we, I think you didn't get to see them last time, that the reports didn't come through, so we can put November to bed here. You see the big number there?
Three million, yeah.
Everything else is just normal, that's the state land use that we get every year, it's just, those are all normal things. That interest number I'm intrigued by, that's six and a half times what we got last month, last year for the same month. I kind of don't want to bring it to the bank's attention, although maybe I am doing that right now by speaking in public about it. That's a pretty big number. I think they're gonna say, um, by the way, we made a mistake on your interest last month. So, um, don't think we're gonna get interest like that all the time. That's, yeah, that's quite a bit higher than usual. Uh, can we look at the bottom half, please, Dave? You see that huge warrant you guys signed last time? That's the, uh, the two education checks, so that means that our cash position is much more normal. That's what it's gonna look like as our starting point for the rest of the year, so that's the, with our municipal tax collections in there. And then just a little tiny bit more down, Dave. I added this, I thought you might be interested to know what delinquent taxes are looking like. So this is our current, what was on the warrant that I just gave Mert was, you see, just shy of $300,000, leaving our current balance there at just over, just over $300,000. What that means is that we had gotten our delinquent taxes down as low as I have ever seen them, and that's because of people taking advantage of some of the aid that's available. So even though this year's warrant was significantly higher than last year's actually, our, our position is pretty much the same as last year. That's, that's just, it just doesn't move that much. We have very similar delinquent taxes every year. So, so I thought I would, I don't think I'll post this every single time I do one of these reports because they're, they're not in sync, so it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison with, with the last year. It sort of depends on when Mert gets me checks, but I thought we might want to look in on that occasionally just to see.
Is that program going for another year, the one that helps with the delinquent taxes? Or do you, have we heard anything about that?
I don't think, I, the, there is still money floating around for utilities, but I'm not sure that there is, do you know about that, Dave?
I don't believe that program's continuing. I'll find out for you.
Yeah, 'cause I know that that really helped a lot of Shasberry folks.
I mean, that's right. I mean, I, I'm just talking about numbers here, but that means a lot of people who...
Actually, I do know. The utility one has to be filed by December 31st. After October, I think it was, it dropped from 100% to 70% reimbursement.
Okay.
So, 'cause I did have a conversation with a resident that, yeah, time is clicking out and you missed on 30%, so.
Right.
Get it in promptly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but so that, that means actual families in Shasberry are getting out from under a burden and I'm very glad. The money's there, please take advantage of it.
Right.
And then we, you can look at the bottom there, our, you can see the revenues and expenditures are very much in line with what they were last year, which is kind of remarkable when you think about what inflation has been like. We're still holding the, sticking to budget, which is, of course, kudos to Dave as well.
Absolutely.
So that's all I have to say about the cash flow. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? Okay, do you want to pull up the reserve? Oh yeah, I wanted to mention, I finally got positive pay reinstated with the, the switch over to the, the new bank, as of, actually as of today, so we're, I think we're back having all of the services that we had before, so it's just like that ugliness never happened. Okay, so let's see, the only activity there you see is, that was some funding for Class 3 roads that we were expecting. Dave and I have some questions about where that money is ultimately going to land, but right now it's, it's there in the, the Class 3 Road Fund. That there might be, might be better to be dealing with it through the general fund, we're not 100% sure.
Yeah, some, some does need to migrate to, maybe even to culverts. So many reserve funds went into those two major projects that we might have to move some of this around.
Yeah, but anyway, so it's parked there for now. And the rest, you can see the $25,000 in water, that's because the water bills are out right now, they are due the day after tomorrow. If you can hear my voice and you have not yet paid, as I have not yet paid, so this is reminding myself too, make sure you get those, those payments in by Wednesday. And I think that was all that went on in the reserve accounts. You could, Dave, if you go down just a little, two more lines, a little, little tiny bit more, a little bit more.
Nope, this is the bottom.
So there's the, the interest for this is a much more normal, $119.
Yeah.
Weird.
Yeah. I don't want to ask about...
Stop. Don't catch up to you.
Yeah. Uh, so anyway, that's, that's the reserve funds. Any, any questions about any of that?
Anybody got any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some guests that would like to talk to us about Lake Perron. It's best if somebody comes up to be next to the microphone.
Okay. We're, we're... Oh, you can bring two chairs then if you'd like, just, the microphone allows everybody to hear.
So I'm gonna start and then they're gonna take over.
Okay, either way.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here. And so we are here to talk about Lake Perron. And although we represent Perron Recreations, which is the very small, not-for-profit that operates the recreation area, we're really here to talk about the lake as a whole. And it's kind of important, I feel like, for us to make that distinction because we are kind of taking, we're trying to take leadership on a problem that we feel is an issue for our entire community, not just Perron Recreation's. Of course, we have a particular interest in the lake, 'cause we're right there, but we believe that the lake is a really important asset for our entire community. And we've sort of been watching and listening to people, to people complain basically about how the weeds are just getting really out of control. And the way it works, and this will be explained a lot more, which of course, everybody probably knows, is that the weeds grow, the silt gets stuck in the weeds, the bottom of the lake continually raises up, the weeds grow more, and it's just kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy, and the lake is filling in. And if we don't do something soon, we won't have a lake anymore, we'll have a swamp. And so we've decided that we should take leadership in, in trying to mobilize our communities to do something about that. So we've really just, we just start, well, it's really kind of been a long time investment. I've been meeting with folks from the state for the last 10 years about what can we do, what will they allow us to do, what do we need to do to get ready to do that? And we've done our due diligence in terms of getting some smaller state grants to do a little bit of water quality work. We've also done a mapping program where we've mapped the weeds in the lake and we know where they are and what kind of, because there are different kinds of weeds in the lake. And so we've come up not only with a plan, costs, but also have established a very strong connection with this, with our local Bennington County Conservation District to help us figure out what the right way to move forward is. So we're doing a lot of education because we want the community writ large, you know, citizens, people that use the lake, people that haven't been there in 20 years, people that learned to swim there, people that got married there. I mean, there are just so many different people that have used that lake for different kinds of things, to really get them to understand what's happening and what the possibilities are for fixing the problem. So we're here to tell you about that, to tell you what is going on and what the possible remediation plans are. It's not a quick fix. It would probably be, I mean, we'd like to do something this summer, but we know that it's probably at least a 10-year plan to make any considerable dent in the kind of long-term filling in that's, that's been happening. But on the other hand, if we don't start now, you know, it's just gonna get worse every year. And this last summer, we've seen a significant, it's gotten worse, and it's partly because the water's warmer and the climate's changing. So the others here are gonna give you more of the kind of presentation about the details, but I just kind of wanted to lay out the sort of basics right now. So we're here partly for education and partly to tell you about what the plan is and see what you think of it. So we're, we'll answer questions as soon as the presentation is finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I recognize some of you from the Lions meeting. I'm Camille Kaufman, I'm the director at Lake Perron. I wanted to give these out just as kind of a visual image, and if you could go to the next slide, please.
Well, I should've said who I am. I'm Alyssa Dilt. Some people know you, but I don't think I do.
Thank you.
He's the board chair.
So this image was taken a few years ago, basically to highlight the weeds in Lake Perron. Now, our campaign is titled Save Lake Perron. And this past summer, we launched a petition at our window as well as on change.org, and we have over 700 signatures from community members that are really engaged in this campaign to save Lake Perron. Typically, or essentially today, we're talking about milfoil because that is what the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC, is focused on in the lake. And then our 10-year plan, like Alyssa was saying, will focus more on the other weeds that you'll see in this graphic, which some of those are pond weed.
Which are more invasive, the milfoil?
Milfoil, yes.
Yeah, it's been a problem since I was a kid.
Yes, so basically, we found that it showed up in the 40s, we did some management in the 80s, and then also...
Well, in 1979, they dredged the lake.
Yeah, and lowered the level, probably.
I don't know about that, but I know when they dredged it, they probably should've got some equipment in there and sort of pulled, you know, the weeds out then.
Right.
Instead, I think their idea was that, well, the sun's just gonna, it'll dry up and it'll all just die.
Yes.
It didn't happen.
It didn't happen. And then in the early 2000s, we also did, Perron Recreation did some very localized inside our swimming ropes management.
I used to be a lifeguard there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I grew up at Lake Perron.
Nice.
Yeah, absolutely. We, back in the late 70s, used to go out rowboats and motors on the boat, and we'd have chain-linked fence, we'd be dragging it. It was just, what a circus, you know?
Yeah.
But we did everything we could to try and eliminate all the weed to make it more, you know, swimmable and of course, to attract more people to come there.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah.
And that's what we've been hearing, you know, I have been the AmeriCorps person for the past two years, and really, I've just been hearing countless members and community members, fishermen who access Lake Perron on the fish and wildlife side, like, I'm not gonna come to Lake Perron anymore in the summer because of the weeds, and that's really alarming for us.
I don't swim there because of it.
Right.
You know, and I, I used to love swimming at Lake Perron. You know, like I said, I grew up across the tracks from Lake Perron, I used to go there all the time. I worked there in my summers and, but like I said, not to get off point, but that, that, when I was a small child, there was no weeds at all. The weeds were on the very far neck of the lake if there were any. That lake was beautiful. By the time I became a teenager, the weeds were making their way in, and it was mostly on the edges of the water, you know, making, it wasn't in the center. It could've been, you just didn't see them because they haven't grown to the top yet.
And now, there's more of them.
But, yeah, we used to, we used to have some, what was it, Dr. Fagerhorn, I think it was, he used to swim laps or whatever, he'd go way out into the weeds, of course, as kids, we used to worry about him because he was an old man and goes, oh, you know, this guy's gonna get stuck out there someday and die, but he never did. But yeah, but it has been a problem, and I think this, I don't know what your solutions are, what you may think they are, but I honestly, it's a man-made lake, you know that?
Yes.
And that's why there's no flat beach, everything goes up the hill, because when they made the lake, they kind of pulled all the material up onto the sides except for the railroad track side. That would be another thing to consider too, is if you were gonna dredge the lake, let's say, and let's say get some equipment in there to clean some of that out, probably, if you're gonna go that extreme, you may want to, you know, try and knock that hill down a little bit too.
Yeah, I mean, it's funny, we're actually doing a remediation project now where the building is.
Right, so people can actually...
Because we've been seeing some erosion.
Lay flat instead of on an incline, you know?
That's another issue though.
That is, that is. Well, let's get back to weeds.
Yeah.
So what do you plan to do?
Yes, so we've been working very closely with Michael Fernandez here from the Bennington County Conservation District. We've had a, we've been doing our outreach to, for example, the Lions Club and other community organizations. And then we also had a few public forums online, virtually and in person, to really gauge the community's interest, because we really want to include the community, we want this to be grassroots in our decision-making. So we have kind of a two-part plan, not finalized 100% yet, but kind of leaning in a direction of this year doing an implementation project to manage the milfoil this year, and I'll talk more about what specifically we're planning to do in a little. And then the longer term, which will include, you know, identifying point source pollution and non-point source pollution and doing kind of a water quality monitoring because, you know, that's another factor of why there's an excess weed growth, and I think...
Oh, no, my father and Norm Hock used to take water samples for the state of Vermont back in the 70s, and they did it for all, into the 80s anyway. So there's gotta be some record of that, but they, yeah, they're, it's all been done.
Right, just re-establishing.
Yeah.
And really sustaining it too, I think is big. And then, yeah, so then our first point would be to remove and manage invasive species and then move on to the nuisance species, which is what the state labels, like pond weed and more native plants that are rampant. So that's kind of where we're at for now. Lindsay, who is our AmeriCorps member, is going to talk about the effects of milfoil specifically for our short-term plan.
Got some brochures for everyone. My name's Lindsay Restino and I'm the AmeriCorps Outreach Coordinator at Perron Recreation. So I'll be talking about the effects of the water milfoil. There are tons of negative effects that this has on our lake just besides affecting the swimmers. First is fish and aquatic species. The way that milfoil grows, it grows in very thick patches that block the sunlight from reaching the water. This depletes the oxygen level in the water, which harms the fish, and also it create, the oxygen has to get to the plants, the native species that we want. The depletion of the native plants also affect the fish population. With more and more growth of water milfoil, it will overcrowd the native plants that we want, causing a monoculture in the lake. Obviously, the effects on recreation are pretty clear. This milfoil, it grows extremely thick, harming the swimmers, boaters, fishermen, everyone who comes complains about it, like Camille was saying. Also a problem with safety. Who, you were just saying that you were scared that that old man was gonna drown in the lake, 'cause all the weeds are so thick. You know, we have a lot of kids that come to the lake, obviously, we don't want anyone to get hurt or harmed by these plants. And then also just the overall health and future of Lake Perron. Like Alyssa and Camille were saying, the more growth of water milfoil, Lake Perron will become a swamp eventually, just within a matter of decades.
I did save a girl from, uh, from the weeds one day.
So you know?
Yeah, I did, yeah, well, yeah. She was actually in one of the paddle boats they used to have, a little bicycle there, I don't know if you slid them there or not, but anyway, she got stuck out there, she was probably maybe 10, 11 years old at the time, she was crying her eyes out, so I had to go swim through the weeds, through the mil, to go get her. I mean, this stuff was all over me, it was gross.
Yeah, it's, it is really gross.
All you could hear was the popping and snapping of the stuff, breaking as I was going underwater to try and, 'cause I figured if I went underwater and went up, it would be a lot easier, but it wasn't. It was, it was bad. I looked like a swamp monster, come on, I'm here to save you, lady.
I think you're also saying how the weeds only used to be in one portion of the lake. That's another problem with the milfoil, it spreads extremely easily and very quickly.
Well, yeah, when I was a kid, it was just in the neck of the lake, and I'm talking, you know, probably up till I was 11, 12 years old. Then by the time I was 17, it pretty much had gone around the perimeter of the lake, it was really filling in quick.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it definitely is a problem, and it's more than just a case of, you know, gross weeds in the lake, it's affecting the health of the fish, the aquatic species, the ecology of the lake. Um, but yeah, I guess I'll turn it over either to Camille or Michael.
So what's the fix?
Well, that's what I'm here to talk about. Well, there's, there's no one fix.
Explosives?
So, evening ladies and gentlemen, my name's Michael Fernandez, I'm the district manager for the Bennington County Conservation District. I've been working very closely with these fine folks at Perron Recreation as well as members of the DEC and other state agencies to try and start identifying solutions for the lake. For the Eurasian water milfoil in particular, we have two options and we're leaning more in one direction than the other. Thank you. The option that we're leaning towards is applying an herbicide called Pricelacor, it's relatively new to the market. It is a systemic herbicide that will target, specifically target this species and will not harm the other native species in the lake. If it weren't such a monoculture, it would. But because the infestation has gotten so severe, we're pretty confident, based on the other components of the lake, that it won't harm the remainder of the plant life in the lake. Yep, okay, you updated it. We received a quote from Solitude Lake Management for a range of $15,000 to $23,000, depending on some variations in the application program, and that would treat the perimeter of the lake and kill everything. It'll kill all the milfoil that year. It's been used very effectively in other parts of the state, Lake St. Catherine, Lake Iroquois, there's also been pilot programs done in Lake George, where the other option... If you could go to the next slide, would you? Oh, no, I forgot, we took that one out. The other option is what's called vacuum suction harvesting. That is what has been done in other lakes in the area for a very long time, primarily Lake George. It is very expensive, as your hand gesture just indicated, and it doesn't particularly work. This is really the option that we have. And moving forward, just to touch a little bit more on some of the health and safety concerns that we have, that hasn't been mentioned so far. Yeah, I'll pass around the toxicology report in a moment. But one of the things that happens when you start having a runaway system like this is when those mats form at the top of the water, you're creating a lot of still pools, and in still pools are laid mosquito eggs and a variety of other things. So it's not just about the health of the ecosystem, it's also about the health of the people around the lake. The last thing we all want is a massive mosquito pit in the middle of town. In the long term, we're pretty confident that we're gonna receive funding from DEC through a program called the Aquatic Nuisance Grant and Aid Program, which will cover 20% of the total application costs. They, Perron Recreation, myself, have also been pretty aggressive with fundraising, with local businesses, community members, and that's why we're coming to the three municipalities to begin engaging in this process of longer-term ecological restoration of the lake. This is only phase one. Phase two is developing what's called a Lake Watershed Action Plan, and that, this is how they've ameliorated a lot of the environmental concerns at Lake St. Catherine, Lake Memphamagog, Lake Champlain. We bring all the stakeholders together, identify projects to reduce what is mostly non-point source pollution into the lake from surrounding businesses, residences, et cetera, and start tackle, prioritizing them and tackling them one by one. We're going after the milfoil first because it's what the state will let us do. It's only recently that funding has shifted from the Lake Champlain and Memphamagog basins, they've received more... They've received more federal funding. So they're now shifting down to us. And since Lake Perrin is a gem of this community and there's so much public support for its restoration, the Conservation District, DEC, decided to partner with Perrin Recreation to try and facilitate not only this initial task, but a continuous engagement plan to maintain the viability of this natural resource for the community.
Yeah, just to back that up, I mean, I, as I mentioned, I was, I've been meeting with the state for, it's probably more than 10 years. And for the first eight years, they were like, yeah, we're sorry, but this is a man-made lake and we don't really care about it. And it can go, it'll, it's supposed to go back to a swamp. That was sort of their attitude, that that's what happens. But about two years ago, I don't really take no for an answer usually, so if I think it's the right thing. So I just kept meeting with them and they, I don't know, as Michael said, it's sort of partly a change in this idea that all the money should stay up north. That's one shift that I think has happened politically. But also, I think, as Michael also said, there's a recognition that the people in this part of the state deserve recreational resources as well. That it's not just all about those amazing lakes. I mean, there's no doubt that those are amazing lakes. But that the people from other regions in the state have a right to clean water, you know, healthy recreation. And so they've shifted. And so for the first time, they gave us the sort of soft nod that they would approve of a remediation plan. And then, Michael, you're fairly new at this position.
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm well into my first year on the job.
So Michael's made a huge difference because we finally have a real ally locally, someone who knows more of the science and has, you know, works for the state. So it makes a big difference in terms of our moving forward. But again, we are, I'm a volunteer, a board chair. We have a full-time, one full-time staff, which is brand new. We've never had a full-time staff, a full-year full-time staff at Lake Perrin. So we're trying to rise to this occasion of taking some sort of leadership in this. And again, it does have to be a community effort. So, and we are hoping to get the three towns involved in whatever ways we can. You know, creating a sustainability fund or an environment, is some, some kind of support that goes for a period of time that allows. And, and the other thing is that we've been really discussing this with the Conservation District. We don't want to be seen, we don't want Perrin Recreation, we don't want people to think Perrin Recreation is profiting from this. So we're thinking that the funds for the work on the lake should go through the Conservation District so that we have a good, you know, sort of wall between Perrin Recreation and this work. Because even though we might take a big role in moving this forward, we don't want to be seen as benefiting. Because if, if nothing else happens in the lake and no one wants to do this work or pay for it, we'll still keep our little swimming area, you know, as we free as we can, because we do, we are able to do that. But we can't do anything outside of what roads at this stage of the game.
And I'm happy to field any questions you guys might have on the Procellicor, on the action plan, or...
And I've never been a person that wanted to use any chemical in the lake. But I have been convinced that Procellicor is a very targeted, very short half-life, or whatever the word you use. It goes away quickly, it only targets mill foil. And, um, mill foil, I don't think Lindsay got to say this, if you break mill foil, it reroutes. So anything you do to pull it, to chop it, is just, it's a short-term, very short-term.
I agree with the excitement. When we were ripping it up when I was young, when I used to work at Lake Perrin. I, you're right, because it seemed like the more we ripped it up, the faster it grew back, yeah.
And that's exactly what happened.
Yep.
Probably part of why it's so...
It's my fault.
Well, and there's insufficient funding in the state for invasive species, terrestrial and aquatic. Which is why, like, I put in a grant application to the Department of Interior earlier this year to try and build a statewide invasive species response plan with an AmeriCorps member and a core person at each Conservation District to start directing and funds, directing funds from the federal and state level into these programs. Because when you don't start doing intervention, and you've seen this with your own eyes, when you don't take the right intervention at the right time, it becomes more and more cost prohibitive to intervene. Which is why the district agrees with Lake Perrin that this should be the priority. Not only because the funding is available, but because it's low-hanging fruit that if we can get this ecological niche opened back up and get native species to re-establish in the area, that it will improve the water quality, it will improve the fishery, it will improve the microorganism constituents in the lake, which I believe you all have had tests run and the, like, the bacteria in the lake has even degraded. The microorganisms in the lake are degraded because there's not enough diversity.
Back when my, not to interrupt you, but back when my father used to do the water samples when I was a kid, though it was actually classified as drinking water, and it was that clean back then, it was that clean.
Yeah, and I, I am nominating this Lake Perrin for membership in the La Rosa Partnership, which is a statewide water quality sampling effort. That's another one of those things that's coming down from the Lake Champlain Basin now that the money is opening up. I'm also nominating several other sites in the county, including Woodford Lake and some places along the Husick, the Loomsick, and the Baton Kill that have largely been ignored by conservation efforts because of lack of funds. So, yeah, that's, that's...
What's the condition of Lake Shasberry?
I haven't worked up there as much. They're state-run.
Right, yeah.
And I've concentrated my efforts on Lake Perrin and Woodford Lake because they don't have access to the level of organization and infrastructure that Lake Shasberry would have.
I was thinking, because it's a shallow lake, that mill foil would be rampant in...
I would, I would imagine. And that's the thing about the geomorphology of this region, it's not conducive to lakes. None of these are, they're all in compounds for the most part. So realistically, it would be better to start thinking of Lake Perrin as Perrin reservoir. Reservoirs need regular maintenance, they need desilting, they need species management, they need fisheries management. And if you don't do those things, if I'm still in this job in 20, 30 years, I'll be doing wetland restoration here. And that's just, we don't exactly know the timeline. We haven't been able to conduct studies to really ascertain how rapid the decline is. I would like to be able to give you those numbers, but I can't.
Well, it's going to be geometric.
It's, and it's getting worse and worse. As, I mean, you all have seen how weird this winter's been. You can imagine erosion rates upstream are increasing. Insect ecology is being affected, so you're going to start seeing more and more mosquitoes, more and more other nuisance pests.
Lime disease.
Lime disease, yeah. And so taking action on this sooner than later is very advisable. Especially since this is pretty much the only public recreation area that people in this community have.
Is one treatment considered to be good enough for, for several years?
So, usually. If we can hit, and we're not going to be able to hit everything all in one day.
You're not going to be able to do the whole lake.
If we're going to do the whole lake, but we're going to have to do it in stages. Because the concern is, it's infested about 30% of the total area of the lake. So if you go in and you kill everything off all at once, you're going to kill everything in the lake.
You're going to have rotting in the last system.
Yeah, the oxygen, it'll have an instant oxygen depletion, the fish won't be able to respirate. Everything will die back. So we're working with the Solitude, the contractor, and we've contract, we're putting it out for bid. There's just not a lot of aquatic pesticide, herbicide, excuse me, applicators that are licensed to operate in Vermont. There's only a couple. So we're kind of pigeonholed into those few. My, my dream plan is go in, treat with the Procellicor, and then plant in native aquatic species afterwards. So we don't run the risk of not having native species come back. It'll be difficult to get permits for that, it'll also be difficult to get funds for that. It'll also be difficult to get permits to remove the aquatic, the native aquatic nuisance species in the center of the lake that isn't covered under this plan. But the district, Perrin, I can't speak for Perrin Recreation, but we're committed to continue lobbying the state through any mechanism that we have at our disposal to try and make sure that this resource is something that our community can enjoy for generations to come.
How does the chemical attack that one species deserve?
So it, it isn't exactly species-specific. What it does is, it's a systemic herbicide that stimulates rapid growth. It's very similar to, I'm going to say a dirty word, glyphosate. It's an auxin inhibitor. But it doesn't, it doesn't have the exact same mode of action. So it comes into contact, is absorbed into the plant, gets taken down to the root system, and then kills the plant off by essentially expending the plant's biological resources.
In a very short period.
Yes, the, the folks I've spoke to up at Lake Iroquois, who did this last year, I believe it was, it was real fast. It was a couple days and they started seeing dieback and, very rapid. And the half-life, I believe, is like five and a half hours. Yeah, it's very rapidly deteriorating in the environment.
And what does it turn, breaks into, what, like, just a...
I don't know the exact chemistry. I will pass around the toxicology report. I'm not a chemist, I'm a farmer by trade. So I, I rely on good counsel from DEC and external experts. So, yeah, that's, at this point, if there were another option, we'd be pursuing it. But it really is Procellicor or vacuum harvesting. And after, I think it's like 30-some years in Lake George, they've been doing that. And it just, it helps a little bit, but it, it's not sufficient to actually remediate the problem.
Like, we need to knock it back, like, big time, to be scientific. And then we can figure out what a longer-term kind of maintenance plan is that would give us what we need without spending a fortune, you know, like, it's, I think it's going to come in phases. You know, we're going to have to do the first phase, which might be the first couple of years, which would be really trying to regain some sort of control of what's going on there and then figuring out a longer plan. And one of the things Michael has said is that there's a water manage, well, he's mentioned it before, a water management plan. And we're, I think, next in line after Woodford Lake for doing that plan. So we, we want to get something going right away. We will then take this on in a much bigger, long-term planning way and create a plan that will hopefully, you know, I mean, nothing lasts forever, but, you know, it'd be nice if it lasted another 150 years, which I guess is about how old it is now, so.
So, yeah, what Alyssa's referring to are lake water, and I mentioned them, lake watershed action plans. And the way DEC scores those applications is not only need, but community engagement. And a willingness shown by the community to engage not only in the fact-finding process, but in the process of developing and implementing projects. So what will happen, I'm undergoing a similar process for Woodford Lake. We look at the whole watershed, we identify key natural resource concerns, prioritize them, and then knock them out one by one. So these are things that I'll be writing grants for, for the next very long time.
So the one thing that we do know is that with the mill foil, like you were saying, it's bringing the bottom up. So it's becoming a more shallow lake.
Correct.
I tried to take a kayak out there about two years ago. I couldn't even hardly get through the neck of the lake anymore, you're scraping bottom, it blew my mind. When I was a kid, that was all sand bottom, you could actually swim. So if it's building up the lake, now we're going to get rid of the weeds, but how are we going to get rid of the buildup?
Eventually, we might have to look at dredging.
I, I think dredging would probably be the first thing you should do. Dredge, and then get some equipment in there and start pulling that, you know, start scraping that stuff out.
Yeah, that, eventually, that is what's likely going to happen.
Then you can attack it with what you were talking about, I bet you can maintain it like nothing.
So getting, getting those permits in place is very difficult. What we try to do typically, and this is across the board, I, I work in a couple different watersheds. We always try and target upstream projects first, and then they'll let us move further and further down. So they want us to remediate at the highest point in the watershed first. So we stop the inflow of the sediment, and then they'll maybe let us take the sediment out of the lake. But it's because the state technically owns the waterway, like they do all the waterways in Vermont, we can't do anything in there without their permission. So in order to get that permission, we first have to go through this process of watershed scale planning, project identification, remediation at the sources of the problem. Because they don't want to fund something that they're going to have to fund again in 30, 40 years. So that's, that's more or less how the process works from DEC's perspective. And I don't know how familiar you guys are with the Conservation District or the work we do or what our purpose is, but we largely work to advocate for the county's interests and natural resources. So I engage with DEC all the time, trying to let them know what our priorities are and try and improve the, those priorities' chances of being addressed at the state level. So until we can convince them by going through their process that that's something that we can do and then won't be a problem again in the future that they'll have to fund, then they'll let us do it. And I seriously doubt that we'd be able to get funds from the state to do the dredging either. It would likely be a mix of private funds, municipal funds, et cetera.
I think we should start pulling the boards out of the spillway, right?
Well, and that is, that is an option. Perrin Recreation does have the, they have the option to lower the lake seasonally to deal with nuisance weeds and deal with fisheries management. But there's a stipulation in there that they cannot desil without state permission. So we can lower the level, but like, we can't just send people out there with shovels.
We've just discovered this agreement between the state and Lake Perrin saying that we can lower the water level, even though I've brought that up every time I met with the state. Like, because it's basically free, like, just let us lower the water level and it will kill off at least a perimeter of weeds. And they're like, no, you can't do that. So we're in the process of, we just, like, today, literally, had coffee and we were saying, we need to see if we can make, do that this winter or the latest next winter.
So, I was going to say, in this corner of the lake right here?
Yeah.
Fred Welling, when he was the town manager in North Bennington, he used to go there in the morning and there was a mechanical wheel you could turn. It would open up and he would lower the levels of the lake. Yes, right, right there in the corner, right there. There used to be a, a big, like, steering wheel thing you'd turn and, you know, worm gear and you'd, yep, oh, yeah.
And that, that connected to the boards in the dam, before had that, was the fight?
Yeah, you would just, you would turn it and it would lift up this big thing and the water would go out.
It's still there.
Yeah, that's, that's where you lower the lake.
Right there.
Yeah, the actual dam, you don't do anything in the dam to lower the water level.
People can say lifting the boards.
Well, in the dam, there are boards, you can, well, the ladder is that goes up. You'll see where those boards are, yeah, you can lift those out and dred. I don't know if that's there anymore, is it, or?
So, and there's like a conduit or like a pipe or something? Just go do it.
Well, back when they dred, back when they dredged the lake, they, they, well, they dredged it because they were having a leakage going underneath the railroad tracks. And they still, to try and protect the tracks, that's actually when they took down the old wooden spillway and they put in the cement wall and everything, yeah, and the cement wall went up and all that, yep.
The majority of the water runs through Shasberry, so Shasberry certainly wants to be at the table in the future when, when you start doing your, your things like that. Some Shasberry residents have kind of indicated that they would like to be on the board. They have history with Dalies and all that sort of stuff. Because a lot of, a lot of samples and things were done because Daly was doing a lot of with the gravel and all that sort of stuff.
Right, a lot of the washing of the gravel, I think, was part of the silting problem at a certain point in time, right. at, at a certain point in time, right?
Uh, so, but as far as funding, I mean, we're in the middle of budgets and all this sort of stuff. It certainly wasn't in the budget for this year.
No, we understand that.
Yep.
I mean, this will cost between, what are we, down to fifteen to twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, if we do the pricellicor this year, that would be the amount. Um, and, you know, of course, we, we understand that people's budgets are tight and influx. If there were a way to allocate something for this, and again, it would probably go to the Conservation District, um, that would be great. We can make a specific ask if you want, if you prefer us not to and to wait, we can do that, but we're, we, we, we do feel like, because we're really trying to put some momentum behind this, we do, we will try to do something this summer if, if it's at all possible.
We'll certainly take it under advisement and work on it.
Should we write you a little letter with some information on it, or how would you like us to proceed next?
Please.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
Yeah, I know we've taken up a lot of your time, but.
No, it's, it's okay.
Who, who made these changes?
Oh, Frank Howard.
Frank Howard.
Frank Howard, yeah.
Nice to look at it right there, yeah. So thank you.
Oh, yeah, back to full weeds.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, thank you all so much for your time.
Good luck.
Yeah.
But as far as a low-tech solution, I think dredging the lake would be the way to go.
Well, we, we agree with you. We just, as Michael said, it, this is one of the reasons why I had to get the water quality testing, I had to do the weed, I mean, if, the weed mapping has been a very good thing, but they, they're very, very strict about, you've gotta do this first, then this, then this, then this, and this, and that could take ten years to get to that point, I'm sorry to say.
Yep.
I mean, unless things change.
Please keep in touch with us, because we wanna be part of that.
And we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Welcome, Chris.
Am I up now?
You're, you're up next.
Better up.
You're proposing some changes to the zoning bylaws?
That's the business that we're in.
Okay, good enough.
So, these, these are relatively minor changes, I would say, and, uh, there are five of them. I only have four here on my cheat sheet, so maybe Martha can.
We may be, I don't, you go through yours, and then we'll see.
All right, well, the, the first item is, uh, under the category of reducing the impacts of development, which is, uh, to make the requirement for the DRB to consider open-space subdivision solutions under a variety of different situations of, uh, you know, uh, threat to agricultural soils, a threat to drainage, uh, there's a whole realm of them. And, uh, this is a, the open-space subdivision hasn't been utilized but one time in Shasbury, but it was a very successful development over at Lake Barron for, uh, Shas housing, and, uh, I think we saw it really work well, and, um, that there's conserved land in common, that all the units share, and, uh, so it was a demonstration that this really could work. There was always the open question of, well, nobody had ever utilized, they'd been on the books for twenty years. So this is an attempt to kind of take that and expand it into, uh, other realms to see how we can make development more kind of eco-friendly at Shasbury.
Okay.
Um, another item, and this might get some folks excited, uh, is a prohibition on shooting ranges. And what, what, what the background of this is, is the experience of West Pollock.
Yep.
Yeah, we're all thankful we don't live in West Pollock after what those people have been through, especially the zoning administrator, I can't imagine. But, you know, this, this experience with West Pollock is believable to say that this could happen in any town and that it probably won't happen in your town, but God help you if it does. So a blanket pro- prohibition on shooting ranges.
But it keeps Rod and Gun Club and anything that's already been here.
Oh, no, it won't affect Hell Mountain.
No, no, but, but this is just in Shasbury, it doesn't affect Glossombury, is that right?
That, that, we have no jurisdiction to Glossombury. They have their own planning commission and zoning board of adjustment, or DRB, I guess it is, um.
So, why is there a need for this prohibition now?
Because what, what happened is that up in West Pollock, somebody came in and set up a.
Training camp.
Training camp for terrorists type of thing.
Wow.
And they couldn't stop them.
I didn't know that.
Oh, wow. This has been going on for.
Well, I, I think it was a training facility that had shooting part of it. It was not for terrorism, it was, it was just a, a shooting range and training facility, educational facility is what they called it, but it violated a lot of zoning ordinances, there were buildings that went up that were not permitted. It's cost the town many, many thousands of dollars with back and forth between the gentleman that owns the property and all the neighbors.
It's bad.
And lawsuits.
That is bad.
And so we're trying to, uh, hopefully mitigate anything like that happening in Shasbury, and we already have a wonderful gun range in, at Rod and Gun Club, off of Rod and Gun Club Road, so.
Yep.
Uh, another item is, uh, just a correction of discrepancy or a contradiction, I should say, in, in the, in the zoning bylaws, which says that an accessory dwelling unit, which everybody has the right to either build or convert an existing structure, is a move on the part of the state of Vermont to generate more housing, which we're told is badly needed. Um, anyway, um, it, the definition said that the accessory dwelling unit could only be thirty percent the size of the main house, the main dwelling unit, and, but when you went to definitions, it said fifty percent, so it was a contradiction. So this is more in the nature of housekeeping.
Okay.
Um, and then the other one, it has to do with what we call tiny houses. They've become very popular TV shows about tiny houses, and, and there are tiny houses in Shasbury, in fact. I, I own something that could be a tiny house, but according to the definition, a tiny house shares the same construction as a mobile home. In other words, a steel chassis, so that it's, it's potentially mobile. So we've taken and rolled those two things in together so that the definition of mobile home also includes tiny houses. So it, it's just a clarification, and I don't think it affects what gets built in Shasbury, but it, it, it opens up that avenue if there was ever, uh, if it was ever contested, it kind of clarifies what will qualify. So now there are five things, Martha, what's, what have I forgotten?
I know, I'm trying to think. There are several that are not gonna be on this year's slate of things. Do you have it right there?
Yeah, I'm just reading through, I think you did, have you?
'Cause I think the other three that we've passed are gonna be on twenty-twenty fours.
I have the dwelling unit, manufactured home, tiny house.
Yeah.
We talked about, the new section on the ranges, the new section on amending the zoning permit or site plan.
Oh, that's it.
Which would not dovetail into the subdivision regulations.
The amending a permit for, for the zoning administrator, making it easier if it's only a certain percentage.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yes, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, this is, you know, one, once again, this is reacting to stuff we see on the ground, uh, in terms of permits. And, uh, so we've, in, in the last bylaw change, we revised the definition of boundary line adjustment, which was a real mess, and nobody knew what it meant, and our lawyer helped us out there, and we got that straightened out into real plain language into DRB. This was a request from the DRB that they didn't know how to go forward with it. And so now, this next move will be to give the zoning administrator, uh, power to approve boundary line adjustment, but it's a very, very narrow definition, so that, you know, it, it can't create a new lot. It's gotta be just moving the boundary of an existing situation. And so we feel like that this'll streamline the process a little bit. It's very cut and dried by definition, and so.
So when you say boundary, are you talking about a property line?
Yes, property line, right.
So you need a surveyor if you're gonna move something, right?
Yes, you do.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, I'm going through it right this minute myself. Yes, you need a, a licensed surveyor and, um, but, you know, the, if you conform to, I think there are eight provisions that define the process, if you conform to those, you either conform or you don't. And so we felt that this didn't have to go to the Development Review Board, this could be handled administratively by a zoning administrator who's here three days a week, and it would just streamline the process a little bit.
Um, I think there was some concern over, the wording said that she may inform the neighbors, but I, there was some concern that, we thought that the wording should be she shall, she shall let the neighbors know, or, or the wording.
Yeah, in section B, uh, the heading is, is zoning administrator may, and you have an operative word, may, which may for number two, which is decline to amend the approved permit and may require the applicant to submit an application for a new permit, is good, but I thought may require the owners of properties adjoining the subject property being notified, should probably be shall, because if I go to the DRB and participate in a hearing as an interested party, and then suddenly it's amended without being notified, I would take that as, I'm being a little bit cut out. So like, B could be, just be switched, it's a minor change, zoning administrator shall do number one, and then may do number two and three. But I think, I, just discussing, I was discussing, as soon as I read it, I talked to Shelley about this, 'cause I was like, if you're amending it and people have been at a hearing before you amended, shouldn't you solicit the opinions of the neighbors, 'cause maybe they feel strongly about what appears to be a minor thing, and give them the opportunity to say, no, we should, I don't like this.
Well, who decides though, ultimately?
Well, if they're amending a issued permit or an issues or approved site plan by the DRB.
No, 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 this wouldn't go to the DRB, though.
Well, then, if, if the zoning admin, you know, being one there myself and having been one here, I don't know if the zoning administrator should be able to amend and approve, if, I mean, you're talking about things that are coming down from a hearing before the DRB. And they want to amend the applicant, they want to amend the decision.
No, this would cut the DRB out completely.
So I think what he's saying, what this was all about in our conversation about things was that our zoning administrator, if the permit had gone through the permitting process through the DRB, and then the landowner decided I wanted to make an amendment, and it was a certain amount, uh, or a certain section of it, that then they would be able to go to the zoning administrator to go through this process, but I think what.
Well, I'm actually going through it right this minute, Martha.
Yeah, well, I think that that's what, what David is trying to say, and so then the zoning administrator, if somebody was to come to the zoning administrator to say, I'm going to make this change on this thing, that the zoning administrator should, um, communicate that to all of the interested parties.
Yeah.
But, and then they may or may not, you know, approve it or do the other two pieces of it. I think that that's what David is saying, that it isn't going through the DRB, 'cause it's already gone through the DRB process, but if it's being amended.
There's no DRB about it, though.
Well, then, I, I don't know, because if, if I'm the zoning administrator and I get a permit application, I mean, I can go back to the owner and say, you need to change this. And once the permit's issued, if it was administratively approved, I could reissue a ultimate permit. Um, to me, when I was reading this, I took this as decisions coming down from the DRB, because otherwise it's all administrative. You know what I mean? Because you don't.
I think what we had been talking about and why we wrote it the way we did was exactly what you were saying, that there was a, a fixed thing that had been approved by the DRB.
Yeah.
And then if the landowner then decided, oh, I wanna do something or add this, that then they would have an easier process just going through the administrator.
Correct.
To do exactly what you're reading.
Do you have the language there, David?
Yeah.
Could you just read it off?
Okay, well, um.
Because I, I think we're going around the circles here.
All right, uh, well, I'll have to do the whole section. So amending a zoning permit or site plan, upon written request from the applicant, the zoning administrator may, prior to completion or occupancy, amend the zoning permit or approved site plan upon finding the proposed change is not a material change and does not affect the type, character, or intensity of the approved development or use of the, or use to the extent specified below. Any proposed change shall not result in an increased requirement for parking or loading spaces. Any proposed change in building footprints shall not exceed five percent or one hundred square feet, whichever is less. Any proposed substitution of planting materials shall not change the overall landscape design concept. And in parentheses, a material change means a change in the planned use or development of land or a structure that may have affected the decision or any conditions placed on the permit if it had been included in the plans as approved. And then it goes on, the zoning administrator may require that the owners of properties adjoining the subject property be notified and have an opportunity to comment prior to acting on the amendment request, two, decline to amend and approve site plan and refer the request to the Development Review Board, see section forty-three oh six, and three, require the applicant to submit an application for a new zoning permit. And then the rest of it is not relevant to this.
So it's an amendment to what has already been passed by the DRB?
Funny, I didn't go to the DRB.
Uh, well, you're, I don't know.
Well, for boundary line adjustment, you don't have to go to the DRB.
But it might not be, it might not be a.
That's why I'm reading this.
That's the underlying factor.
This doesn't even mention a boundary line, does it?
I, I think it was for any, any amendment to a, anything that went, any permit that went through the DRB process. That was how we, when we were talking about this in the Planning Commission, we're talking about it, not, not for boundary line adjustments, per se, but for zoning permits that had passed through the DRB, and then the landlord, the landowner had decided they wanted to make a change, because it had come before Shelley, and she had to go back to the DRB. That's why we were trying to do an around kind of side, easier structure for people to follow, because it was a fairly, uh, small issue.
And there are many minor things that can come up that way, which administratively would be fine to correct, but I think as a courtesy to those who are the abutters and have participated in a DRB session, that they know that five percent or a hundred square feet was just put on this property, or the rose bushes now, you know.
A maple tree or something, yeah.
Okay, well, this is your hearing, if you wanna change may to shall, I think you have the power to do that. That's what these hearings are supposed to do.
Does any, everybody understand, or does any?
Uh, yeah, I.
If you want to change may to shall, I think you have the power to do that. That's what these hearings are supposed to do.
Does any, everybody understand, or does any...
Yeah, just way back when I was on the planning commission, there was, I think this came as two different issues. There was the boundary line adjustment issue, and then this minor adjustments to site plans. So did they get combined somewhere along the way?
No, they didn't. We did a boundary line adjustment thing, and we are doing amendment of the...
I'm just getting confused between the two.
Yes, they're two separate things still.
Okay. Yeah, that seems fine to require to...
You okay with that?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Yes, sure. Do you want a motion, or just make a consensus?
Well, just the key part here. So you have 9.1.5B, and B should just be the zoning administrator shall require the owners of properties. And then have C be the zoning administrator may decline to approve it or refer it to the DRB. And then C and D after that obviously will be changed to D and E. And that's a minor change, it's just changing one word and restructuring.
Okay.
So, do we need a motion?
Well, we'll have to have a second hearing now. We'll vote on the 19th. I believe we have to have a second hearing.
Yes.
Because we have to rewrite it, so we have to have a second hearing, so.
Great.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, since I've been on the planning commission, which is approaching 20 years now...
Thank you. Oh, my God, thank you.
No, but my point is, everything we've presented to the voters has passed, so I'm hoping that we can keep our batting average the same.
But seriously, thank you for what you've done, 20 years.
You're welcome.
This man needs a ticketing parade.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Have a good night.
Okay. Several meetings ago, we tabled the speed ordinance throughout town. We are not going to take it, we're not going to leave it tabled, but what we want to do is make people aware that we did make some changes. And it's been, it's on the website. And the three major changes are Myers Road will be 25 miles an hour from 30, Coal Spring Road will be 25, and Hidden Valley will be 25.
We have all the roads in there.
All the roads in Hidden Valley. That was not in the, what we proposed when we tabled it. So we are making those changes. At the next meeting, we will pull it from the table onto the floor and, but, and present...
Take the vote on it then.
Take the vote on it then. But until then, we want people to take another look.
This is how we got these changes, by putting it out there. So if people take a chance to read it again, maybe there's something else that someone wants us to look at. And if not, on the 19th, we'll enter it into the minutes, and it'll become an ordinance. 44 days after that, people have a chance petition to overturn it, which would be February 1st. And if it isn't appeal, it'll go into effect February 17.
Okay. DRB report?
Yeah, the DPW report?
Or DPW?
The DPW report of the DRB, but I don't know. Not much. It's kind of winter time, it's getting that time of year, so they've been doing that. They've also done a terrific job on Tilden Trail, getting that in shape. If you haven't walked it yet, it's like a real walking trail now. They really did a great job, and we're doing other plans with them for a lot of the projects coming up this spring. Again, I want to thank them for the great work on our dog kennel, which has already successfully housed a dog that was subsequently adopted out of second chance, so that works well. And, as I said, basically, it's getting material in for winter and waiting for the first snow to fly. They are replacing culverts before the snow does fly, so they're working on that, continuing to do, you know, as much pre-work as they can in ditching. Unfortunately, our mower is still not functioning.
That's crazy.
It's a deep internal sensor that, of course, they suggested 8 million fixes, except the one they don't really want to pay for, because it's warranty. And apparently, it's going to be very expensive.
It's a deep internal sensor.
Deep internal.
That's what they told you?
We're going to the center of the earth.
Yes. There's a part in it, I can't remember its name, because I'm not the front man on this, but the way I got it was, the first guy who came said, well, this is not working. And so they did 8 million tasks, and it took it off now in Salem, and it's been in Salem. And, you know, Salem isn't really the issue. This is the same thing when I had an unmentioned car that fell apart. You're dealing with the people who manufacture it, who the last thing what they want to do is pay for the big sensor.
The motor's got to be pulled out of it.
Yeah, the motor's got to come out.
To take a sensor, a proximity switch or a sensor.
Yeah, they're going to a sensor, I don't know if it's the size of my pen or my laptop, but...
I've done a lot of sensors on vehicles. I know it's a tractor, but still, come on.
It's a tough one, and it's expensive, so...
But it's covered for us, like, so none of it...
So what sensors have you got? You've got a crank sensor, right?
I don't know, I couldn't go into the details. If you want, give Mike a call, because he can give you all the details.
I'd love to, yeah.
Yeah, because it's...
It's irrevocable now, sure.
I'm just a bearer of the bad news, I don't really know the exact...
So, this sounds like it's going to be a real process to fix it. So are we going to get it back before the spring and we need it again? Or is this not a...
So this is all under warranty, true?
Oh, yeah, this isn't causing anything. The worst thing that happened was, we got it so late, they couldn't finish everything. So we really need it to be back, yes, by spring.
By spring, because...
So this hasn't been a very good experience for us.
It's been a very delayed experience, that is for sure. It's a great traffic, and it was wonderful for the three weeks it ran.
Oh, it's...
It's really a terrific piece of equipment, and this is...
I saw it, I saw it in action.
Yeah. Yeah, this is just unfortunate, but...
I should have taken a photo. It's like the truck we bought.
Yeah, it was stolen. Still got to suffer with that car a year or two.
Okay, so, that's it for now?
Yes.
Any other business come before us?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. We all set?
I'm good.
So, action items?
We write the, well, I have Shelley, this is really a hard thing. We do the bylaws, so we can have that for the next meeting, we'll get those up. People, please, we need people where the Economic Development Committee and Hall Hall.
19th is going to be a busy one, because we're going to have zoning, speed ordinance, and possibly another one.
Yep, and community appropriations. But I think we're down to one new group for community appropriations.
Okay.
And they may not make the deadline for the petition, so. And the community appropriations are almost all in, which is pretty good, because it's only five days late, so that's not too bad. And most of them stayed what they were last year.
Okay.
So that's very helpful, because I was afraid...
We've still got to work on our policy for us.
Yeah, yeah, we got to get into that next year. We do have to have some kind of policy. Every town has a policy. We've been lucky to do it for, since I've been here, so we have to work on that.
So those are our action items. Anything else?
No.
Adern, entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Joe?
Third.
Whoever, third. Had a discussion? How was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for all your time.
Thank you.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.